Open. Do we have any apologies? There's an arm. I'll say there's no apologies, so if the CEO could do the acknowledgement of country and the prayer of counsel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Acknowledgement of country. Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present, the Cabragore clan of the Durrug nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Durrug and Durrug nations. Affirmation of counsel. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the wellbeing of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. And the prayer of counsel. For the God of our faith, we who are gathered at Liverpool City Council pray for the good government of our city. We pray for the wellbeing of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race, gender or creed. Tonight, we pray for sound decision-making by council, which can improve the quality of life in our city. We pray for Australia, our nation's future, for the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Is there any declarations of interest?
Yeah, I'd like to declare one, Madam Mayor.
Yes, councillor.
Non-procurnary, less than significant. I have, of course, during my period as councillor and recently during the Covid lockdown, et cetera, I've spoken to a lot of business people in the area, which I, some of them had coffee, of course, supported them. The coffee that I've paid for, supported them and listened to them. So that is my declaration of interest.
Thank you. I'm sure George will somehow rather virtually sort that out for us. Thank you.
Bye, George.
Do we have any other declarations of interest?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, councillor Sheldon.
Yes, I've had business dealings from time to time in relation to a number of the businesses referred to in E-Gro 01. I'm going to call it non-procurnary, non-significant. There's nothing particular in recent times. And I won't be leaving the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. There was another councillor that commented. One at a time.
Councillor Haddie.
Thank you, councillor Didd. What is your interest?
Okay. I declare non-procurnary interest, less than significant. I have like a friend, a familiar friend, actually, he was in the CBD, business owner. That's all.
Okay, thank you. There was another one.
Yes, Madam Mayor, when you're ready.
Right, councillor Rhodes, you're on.
Okay, I would also like to declare a non-procurnary interest. I'm not sure how significant, but I will not participate in the discussion or vote and I will leave the room in E-Gro 01. I, the, prior to my becoming a councillor, I was the secretary of the not-for-profit organisation Liverpool Chamber of Commerce. And in that capacity, I may have conflicts of interest with members, businesses who are on the list as applicants for the stimulus grants package. Also, prior to my becoming a councillor, I was a member of the private business organisation called Business Network International Liverpool Chapter, also serving in a managerial capacity in the running of meetings at various times. I recognise businesses who are either on both members of those organisations, either one or both, who are on the list of applicants for the stimulus grants packages. And I acknowledge that my knowledge gained in the capacity to serve both those organisations did give cause to me raise concern of possible concerns rather in regard to the grants that may or may not have been addressed by council. However, there was not enough time for council to respond to my concerns prior to the meeting. So I'm declaring a non-procurnary interest, but I feel, in this particular case, I feel it is in the best interest that I do not vote and I will leave the room.
You'll leave the virtual room.
So, Madam Mayor, on that, does that mean that I have to actually click the telephone to click out of it?
The thing is, you, the legal side of it is you're not to be seen or heard. So probably it would be better if you are leaving the room, disconnect and then reconnect. Somebody can text you and say it's time to come back on if you wish. There's only one item for consideration, so if, once we move into that item, you will obviously have to leave the room and you said you're not going to vote. So I would say that unless there's, well, there isn't any other items and we can't consider anything because it hasn't been advertised. So I would suggest at that point, you may be relieved of attending the meeting, given that you've declared this interest and will leave.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other declarations of interest?
Yes, Mayor, if I may.
Yes, councillor.
Non-procurnary, less than significant. Know a lot of the business owners, don't have any personal dealings with them, but obviously had coffees that I've paid for or visited their restaurants to have lunch. So just a blanket, non-procurnary, less than significant interest.
Thank you, councillors. Any other?
Madam Mayor.
Councillor.
Yes, also myself. Hagerty, I can.
Hold on, councillor Hagerty's got the call, sorry councillor.
Yeah, just the same as everyone else, non-procurnary, less than significant. I've, you know, eaten, drank at a number of these businesses, I've been a customer of quite a few. I think even my old personal trainers in this list somewhere, so a variety of transactions, but less than significant, non-procurnary.
Thank you. Councillor Ayad.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm the same, so less than significant, non-procurnary. I eat at it and drink at these places, also I'm a customer there.
Thank you, and I suppose I'll finish off by saying the same, do you too?
Oh, Madam Mayor, I also had my hand up.
Oh, sorry, councillor Caliander.
Same deal, minus the personal trainer, so not significant.
Yes, I'm minus the personal trainer as well.
All of them, Madam Mayor, also me.
You too, councillor, thank you. It's a bit like setting the rates. Okay then, thank you very much. I think we've done everybody. There's one item on the agenda and it's E-Gro 01 and.
Can I move a motion?
Move that way.
Oh, okay, councillor Hagerty, I think you've got it.
I'm leaving.
Sorry, Madam.
Goodbye councillor Rhodes, thank you. There is a motion moved by councillor Hagerty and another motion foreshadowed by councillor Chitty. Councillor Hagerty, have you a second for your motion?
I will second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Caliander. Do you wish to speak to your motion councillor Hagerty?
No, just to say that.
Oops.
You know, in its wisdom, council decided at the last meeting that they wanted to, that we wanted to be the ones that approved these grants. And that's, you know, that was the majority decision of council, so be it. I did however argue that we needed to ensure that these grants were approved as quick as practical and this is the means by which to do it. Let's have an extraordinary meeting, let's approve the grants and let's continue to support small business in Liverpool as we have done for many years and as we will need to during this next period, which by all accounts looks like we're in recession, so we'll need to continue supporting them and let's get on with it.
Thank you. I just have a question of the staff and it's, and forgive me, it's probably my lack of reading. I did read the report. What was the cutoff date for this, these?
It was 22nd of May, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. I just needed to note that. Thank you. Councillor Chitty, did you wish to speak against the motion?
It's not really against, Mayor. I do accept and acknowledge the recommendation, which would have been part of the motion that I was attempting to move. But obviously you called councillor Hagerty, so I respect that.
Yes, thank you.
So I am supportive of these grants. Yes, council went out there in an extraordinary meeting and said, let's do something for the businesses. But my motion was going to go and I'm happy for councillor Hagerty to take it on board, if she chooses to do so. There's a lot that unfortunately missed out on the grant, where the staff have pretty much said, great idea, but we just need a little bit more information. Now, as a council and as someone who wants to help businesses, I think we should afford the opportunity to those businesses to allow them that opportunity to say, okay, maybe your application missed out on this. Give them really just another crack at it. Because, you know, reasonable pivot, however, required stronger demonstration that it could support generate, you know, or support existing or new jobs. If we're serious about helping these businesses, which we are, I'm not doubting that whatsoever, we understand small business owners maybe didn't read it right or maybe missed out a little bit of information. And for those that missed out, I think we should be affording them the opportunity to, you know, maybe tidy up, if I can use those words, their application and for staff to obviously then consider it and then come back to council. The other part of the motion would be, we are supporting small business, which is great, but there is a group of people in the CBD that have been left out. And I've raised this on, you know, just to give everyone a heads up previously. And if you see point three, by application, rebate landowners in the CBD, obviously excluding Westfyls and Liverpool Plaza, they were affected by mandatory restrictions and amount equal to three months of city development fund levies, where it could be demonstrated that a loss in rental income has occurred. Now, on that point there, there is a group of people that have been, it's a lot of people that have been left out with all the stimulus that has been put out by all levels of government. But the landlord has also been left out. They were told, you need to work out something with your tenant and you need to reduce the rent. A lot of our landlords in the CBD actually rely on the rental income from that owner. When it was mandated, they had to go into negotiations and discussions. What that meant was for that person that owns the property, who relied on that rental income, they still had to pay the rates, they still had to pay the city development fund, they still had to pay the insurance, they still had to pay everything, weren't collecting anything. Most of them probably didn't even qualify for a pension because they were self-supporting themselves and all of a sudden they were stuck. Now, why the city development fund? It is a fund that is levied on by council. We put it on to the CBDs, obviously to improve the CBD. And yes, that money, some of it goes to the plaza that we actually, the mall, when we upgraded and funds are committed from that. When we look at how much money we're getting in from that, when we look at, okay, this is only for a quarter, then we look at how many businesses were affected, based on the numbers that I've received from finance, I don't believe there'll be a major take-up and given that it's by application, but it will give those business owners, the landowners, sorry, a hand and it'll show that we're actually supporting them as well. I'd be grateful if councillor Hagerty took that on board and made it as part of his motion and we could just do this in one hit, but I'd really like to see those three things in there.
Okay, well councillor Hagerty, are you happy to take on all or any parts of that particular suggestion by councillor Chitty?
Yes, certainly happy to take the second one on. I was going to ask a few questions about that anyway, so yeah, whether it's through questions or whether it's through adding it to the motion, happy to do that. Just to add to that, I know that, I think it was roughly 25% of these were recommended for approval. In my mind, that's a pretty low hit rate. I'd like to ask one of the directors, perhaps later on, sort of, what are we doing to remedy that? Why were they so low? Do we have an actual understanding of what their business model is, those kinds of things? So happy to add two. Just on three, we were given some modelling on that, weren't we?
Yes.
Yep. All right. Yep, I'm happy to add that.
All right.
Questions, Madam Mayor?
Thank you councillor.
Thank you. Councillor Hall, you had your hand up?
Yes, I have some questions, Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Four, actually. First of all, does the Charter for the City Development Fund allow grants to be given to non-Liverpool ratepayers? And secondly, it appears council's conditions reflect those of the state government for their $10,000 grant to small businesses. If so, are the applicants of council's proposed grants also eligible for the New South Wales State Government 10K grant? And it also appears that many small businesses in Liverpool have already received these $10,000 grants. Would that mean they are double dipping and ratepayers are doubly contributing, once as a ratepayer and again as a taxpayer? My last question is, from the report, it appears most of the proposed grants are in the $4,000 to $5,000 range. At the previous council meeting, it was suggested that most of these would be in the $1,500 range. Why the change?
Madam Mayor, would you like me to take those questions on?
Thanks.
So, in, thank you. In relation to the first question, the funding for these grants is split into two different pools of funding. So only the CBD-based projects will be funded out of CDF funds. The remainder will be funded out of savings we've managed to make in the city economy area due to a number of projects not being able to occur, usually those that have face-to-face relationships. So we're not in breach of the Charter of the City Development Fund, to answer that question councillor. In relation to the 10K grant, some of the businesses would be eligible, others would not. I can't speak to whether some of them have received funding from that. They may have and, you know, but that's for them to determine, not us. In relation to your final question, at the point when the staff advised around the $1,200 mark, it was when the grant applications had only really just closed and they hadn't had a chance to interrogate them as firmly as they wanted to. I might actually pick up on councillor Hagerty's question there because it's been an interesting conversation amongst the officers around what do you do? Do you fund many applicants a smaller amount? Or do you fund lesser applicants a larger amount, which probably means they're more likely to succeed? The staff were very cognisant of concerns of councillors in relation to the budget. And so the amount that they've put up for proposal is that which is in the budget. Were the budget to be increased, and I'm not proposing that, I'm simply detailing what would happen, then yes, there would potentially be more applicants who would be recommended for funding. But being very aware of the discussion that occurred at the last council meeting, the officers were very cognisant of staying within that budget framework for the recommendations they provided to councillors. So that's a bit of a twofer for councillor Hall and councillor Hagerty. I hope they answer those questions.
Thank you. Councillor Sheldon, you've got your hand up? We've lost him, councillor Sheldon. Hopefully you'll come in soon.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. First of all, in relation to my conflict of interest, I'm now going to increase it as a result of the proposed motion. I've had business dealings with a number of the landowners in the CBD. Secondly, in relation to the City Development Fund, didn't we mortgage that up for a number of years in the past? And isn't the City Development Fund largely spoken for? I'd be curious to know what the effect of this motion might be on the City Development Fund. I seem to recall it took a 10-year loan in the previous term of council and effectively the revenue from the City Development Fund has been spoken for for a long period of time. And thirdly, I think one of the other councillors raised it, but I think we're also given details in the past as to the proportion of CBD landowners that are not actually based in Liverpool. So three points there, if I may, thanks.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, would you like me to speak to those? The first question in relation to what the City Development Fund has been targeted before. Yes, it is being used to pay back works that have been done in the CBD in the past. Mostly, but not exclusively, the upgrade to Macquarie Mall. So any reduction in the CDF would require that repayment to come out of a different area. We can't not pay back what we said we will pay back. I'm pretty sure councillors were provided with that detail. I'm just looking to see if I've got Mr Nardin on screen. I don't think I do, but Mr Hamperas, can you try and dig for your emails and see if you can find that and we can quickly circulate it if we can?
14th of May, 14th of May at 2:06 from George.
Oh, you're good councillor Hagerty. Okay, in relation to the number of landowners who are not resident in the Liverpool CBD, I do recall having that information a while ago, but it would be a while ago and I would have to take that one on notice councillor Sheldon. I've got Miss Scott in the room with me and even she can't give you that figure off the top of her head. Sorry, and there was a third question? Can you just give me that third one again, please?
It was in relation to expanding my declaration of a conflict of interest.
Oh, right, right.
Now that we're talking about landowners. On the second point, if I may, are you able to say just approximately what proportion of CBD landowners are outside the Liverpool LGA? Or is that best just left to take notice?
We're trying to find that out for you. I'll say I'll take it on notice now, but if we can get the information over the course of this discussion, I'm happy to come back to you on that one councillors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ayad, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So just in light of this discussion and the comments of the CEO, thank you for that CEO. I was hoping we could add another point, which I think is really, really important, that a letter actually go out to all the business owners that may be eligible for any federal and state grants, because people may have missed out on it with all the Covid going on, with, you know, business slowing down, with home duties, with homeschooling and all and whatnot. So I'd like to outline that the federal government had a cash flow boost for small business. The minimum was $20,000 and the maximum was $100,000. They also had the Jobkeeper for Small Business to keep employees on. So I recall that that was about $1,500 per employee per fortnight and that was going up until September 2020. There was also the small business grant of $10,000 for small business expenses. And then the state one that I recall was the same one that councillor Hall referred to, the $10,000 business grant. So I was hoping council could get a letter together with all the grants at state and federal and state level, send it out to businesses and let businesses know that they can actually apply for this. And if they've missed out, they need to speak to their tax agent or contact the ATO.
You're muted, Mayor.
If councillor Hagerty would be happy to take that on, I'd support this motion. I think this is information that sometimes people miss out on.
Yes, she is happy to do that councillor.
Thank you, Madam.
Does anybody wish to speak against the motion which is growing like topsy?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, councillor Hall.
Yes, I'd just like to say this. Considering that Liverpool City Council is heading towards a $50 million downturn in revenue by the end of this year, in my humble opinion, council should be carefully reconsidering its commitment to both ratepayers and business, especially since the state government has been generous with its $10,000 grant to small businesses. And I know of quite a few who have received it automatically. Many small businesses are in the process of adapting to an entirely new way of dealing with customers and clients. Both state and federal governments are helping to ensure that occurs so that affected businesses remain viable. Council's Business Development Unit is also helping by providing businesses in our LGA with relevant information and advice. I believe a monetary contribution on top of that advice is not really the primary function of council. It may well be that council initially overreacted to the extent of the problems and needs to reconsider its obligations to both ratepayer and small businesses. Many small businesses have already implemented changes to adapt to the difficulties of dealing with the impact of the pandemic and any additional monetary contribution above and beyond that given by the state and government, state and federal governments, really isn't a function of local council, especially as it faces its own enormous changes to the pandemic. Hence, I cannot in all good conscience support council monetary grants to small businesses that may already have received the state government's 10K grants.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Sheldon, you had your hand up?
There's my query in relation to paragraph three. And in relation to paragraph three, we talk about a demonstrated loss in rental income. What is intended to be the proportion in relation to that rental income? Are we talking about a demonstrated loss of 1%, 10%, 20%, whatever, in other contexts? Certainly it's got to be a substantial loss, for example, in the range of 30%. And I'm just concerned at the moment, the motion talks about any loss in rental income.
Okay, well I'll just ask.
Basically, it's pointless.
Thank you. I'll ask councillor Chitty if he'd like to comment on that point. Just a comment, please, not a speech.
Yeah, just a comment. I think in line with the same way we applied it to the actual grants, you would think that would probably be the best way.
So criteria contained within the grant programme.
Well, with the grant programme, they had to demonstrate last year to this year that they actually, the business owners reduced their income. So you would think you'd apply the same measure in relation to this.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ayad, did you have your hand up again for another question?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I just, if I may, I just want to clarify that I want the letter to outline that they should actually, if they haven't received any of these grants, that they should contact the Australian Taxation Office.
Yes, yes, please.
I want it outlined clearly in the letter, please.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
No worries. Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor, I've just got a question there.
Yes councillor, please.
For, now, we mentioned all the grants that are given by state and federal and I'm very well aware of most of them. Now, how can we, I think, I suppose, part of the questions or to qualify those small businesses for council grants, we should ask that if any of those businesses have received the cash boost and the federal, all the grants that were given and supported the small business? And then probably move on from there to see whether these guys do qualify and probably to what extent? Because again, I'm well aware that a lot of the small businesses got the cash boost from the state, which is 10,000, and equally up to 50,000 from the federal. So I think we should put that in for, that should be public criteria and approval of the grants. And to what councillor Hall said, he's aware of people that did get the grants and I am too. So I don't know how we're going to put that on the approval or the criteria for approval, but I'll leave that to council.
So what you're saying councillor Balut is that if they're receiving grants from elsewhere, they're null and void in regards to application?
Well, not necessarily. Then the grants from council may be reduced or considered because there is up to 40, 50 grand between state and federal that are most small businesses or business that are affected, receiving those grants. So we need to be aware and responsible that if those businesses did receive a grant, and what are they?
Councillor Hagerty, what do you, how do you feel about that inclusion?
No, and when it's my turn to speak to the motion, I'm happy to explain why.
Yeah, we're getting there. Any other questions? Right, now speak to your motion councillor Hagerty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, look, in response to whether they've received money from the state or federal government, the federal government didn't make it a criteria that if you had received money from the state, you can't get money from the feds. And likewise, the state didn't make it a criteria that if you got money from the feds. And the reason, and that's the reason why council shouldn't make that a criteria. And the reason is, each level of government has a different skill set, it looks at a different area and is giving different kinds of stimulus for different things. Now, there are certain kinds of grants and stimulus that the federal and state government are giving and that's fantastic. But there are specific needs in Liverpool, in the Liverpool CBD. There's specific context as to how and where those businesses are suffering that no state or federal grant can specifically address. We're here to, while, you know, we're certainly governed by the state and federal government, we're responsible for Liverpool and Liverpool alone and we've tailored our response to the needs of Liverpool businesses. And we've tailored our response to the needs of Liverpool businesses alone as well. So that's why I don't think it should be a condition of whether they've received a state or federal grant. Our grants have been developed after listening to the needs of local businesses and they've been set that way. So that needs to stay out of the motion. Just in regards to some of the comments that councillor Rhodes, sorry councillor Hall made about council overreacting to the problem, or council potentially overreacting to the problem. You know, he made the comment that our revenue is down $50 million, that is a, you know, that's not an insignificant number. So quite clearly that's had a major impact on council's finances and therefore it's had a major impact on the local economy. So I would say we certainly haven't overreacted. And I'd say we haven't, you know, we probably haven't seen the worst of it yet. If you think about, while restaurants and cafes are open, you've still got companies in the logistics and transport, in tourism, in accommodation, who are going to have to weather this for another three to six to 12 months until you know, international travel's back on. So you're still going to see a lot of other businesses start to struggle and start to really have their backs to the wall over the next few months. So this has got a long way to go. In regards to councillor Ayad's addition number four, could we, I'd actually like to make that communication, that communication go out, because we could also send out emails, which are cheaper and more effective, in addition to a letter. And I can confirm that both the federal and state members have done a series of communications. They've done mailouts as well, especially around some of the stuff that's been mentioned there. So I think the member for FAL has put out a leaflet saying, you know, here's how you apply for Jobkeeper, here's your eligibility, here's how you apply for Jobseeker and those kind of things. So while I certainly think it's the federal and state members' responsibility to communicate federal and state, there's no reason why council shouldn't also help out where it can. So that's it from me, but let's vote on this. And as I said at the beginning, you know, the quicker we get out there and help small businesses, the quicker our economy can recover. And let's hope it doesn't affect Liverpool too bad over the next six to 12 months.
Thank you councillor, we've had a speaker for and against, do we have any other speakers against?
If I can comment on councillor Hagerty's, madam mayor, with your indulgence.
Then you're going to be speaking against it councillor Balut, is that yours?
What councillor Hagerty said, yes, madam mayor.
Go ahead.
Look, yes, the state have put a criteria in place, so has the federal. And I do appreciate that we're all out there to support small business councillor. But state and federal did put a criteria to approve those grants. And I believe council should do the same thing as being responsible governing body. Now, we want to support small business, as the state did and the federal said, for me to give you the cash boost, you need to comply and that's the criteria, so is the federal, right? So therefore, sorry councillor, no, we, council should do the due diligence and approve those applicants and make sure that rate payers or taxpayers or whatever money is going in the right direction. Now, we do want to support them, absolutely, I am a small business. But we need to understand that where that money going and eligible people, fully supportive of that. So I do disagree councillor, that no, council should not make it difficult, we're not making it difficult. We want to understand if you're eligible for that fund, well deserved, have it. We do support, we want to support small business, but there should be some criteria. As a federal, I repeat again, and the state government has put in place, thank you.
If you'd read the council papers councillor, page five, the criteria.
Excuse me councillor Hagerty, thank you. Do we have another speaker for?
I'll speak for mayor as it is.
Thank you councillor.
And I'll be quick, fully support the motion currently as written. I take on board all the comments of my fellow councillors. I think as councillors, how can I say this nicely? When it comes to the criteria, we buggered it up as councillors. We as councillors at the extraordinary meeting said, go out with these applications. If we had an issue with criteria, we should have set that criteria as councillors from day one and advised the people what they should be applying for and what information they do. In good faith, these businesses did apply based on what we set out. And it was us that set it out at the extraordinary council meeting. So I think we should as councillors then say, okay, if you've met the criteria we set out from day one, you tick those boxes and staff have gone through it and some didn't meet all the criteria. And we're saying, okay, let's show us how you can do that. When it comes to the rate payer dollar, most of the money is coming from that city development fund, which is paid for by the landowner in the CBD. Yes, some of the other funds are being used for outside the CBD. So it's the actual landowner that's really paying these grants from that town improvement or city development fund. And I think they'd be pleased with us to support a business that hopefully will stay in that business and continue to pay them rent sometime down the track and ensure that the landowner actually makes, you know, gets their rental income. In relation to staff wanting to stick within the actual budget that we set for this, obviously we received a lot of applications. I'm not sure if there's an appetite there within councillors. Do we look at now capping it, yes, we said to everyone you can apply for $5,000. Do we look at now capping it for everyone so that we could spread this out more? And I'm happy to listen to anyone that will throw out a number. Thank you mayor.
Thank you councillor. Do we have any other speakers against?
I've got a question madam mayor, which you'll probably interpret as being against. In relation to paragraph three, has anyone been able to either work out or estimate roughly in dollar terms what a three-month holiday on the city development fund would be, multiplied by all the CBD landowners?
Yes, we do have that information, Mr Hampuris, were you able to find the email?
I can't find it, but I've messaged our CFO and he'll be ordered on as soon as I get it.
Yeah, give me a second too and I'll just check councillor Sheldon as well to see where I can find it.
Councillor Sheldon, that information did go out to all councillors. I remember reading, don't ask me what it said now, but I do remember reading it. And it actually projected it out to not just this year, but next year, the year after and so on. So there is a loss, but not immediately. It's I think in about the second or third year, it hits the fund at that point.
So if you're talking about projecting two or three years out, this is only talking about a three-month holiday on the city development fund. And so I'm wondering whether that's the same thing or not.
I believe so, because councillor Chitty had raised it previously.
Yeah, madam mayor, can I jump in when you allow me? Yeah, just in relation, I think it is significantly different to the actual projecting and forecasting, and I could be wrong. That was done if across the board, everybody was.
Yep, everybody, yep, right.
To get the three months off. This is being very specific to those and by application to those businesses that were affected. So it's going to be majority probably cafe takeaways.
Yes.
And when it comes to raw numbers, if you want me to expand, I've got the email in front of me.
Oh, no, it's, yeah, okay, if you wish to councillor, that's fine.
That's fine, if other councillors have got it, that's fine, I don't want to say anything.
It did go out, I think. All right, do we have any more speakers for?
Well, I think there's still the unanswered question of are we going to cap number three? And are we going to cap it in total or are we going to cap it per application? I'd be happy to cap it per application. And again, happy for some input on what that number is.
Well, to matter for council?
Jeez. Come on, come on.
So just to clarify madam mayor and councillor Hagerty, are you talking about a cap of, like in terms of throwing numbers in there, you're talking about a cap of a particular amount? Or overall, you know, in terms of a budget for that particular item?
I think you need an individual cap.
Okay. Well, if the cap for the businesses was 5,000, perhaps, you know, the equivalent cap for loss in rental income then? Just to get discussion started.
I don't think anyone wants to start a discussion.
May I make a suggestion councillors, rather than make a decision on the fly, which seems to get us into a bit of bother, that we maybe add a sentence that said, an investigation on the realistic, a realistic way of capping these monies be pursued and presented to the next council meeting. That way, there'll be some recommendation that you can either go with or disagree with and gives everybody a better time. That's only a couple of weeks away and then we can actually look at what we're doing and the impact. Just, yeah, that's the sort.
Yeah, look, given that won't slow the application process down, they're going to be out there for, you know, a month or two, then, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. Okay, is there any other discussion? Do you want to write a reply councillor Hagerty? I think this is by default.
Yeah, I gave one earlier, so.
All right, then I'm going to move the motion as moved by yourself and seconded by I don't know who, because it's disappeared. Here it comes councillor Caliander. Have we got the voting sheet, George?
Oh, well, that's what they've voted, I don't understand.
Here it comes, okay, I'm voting for councillor Ayad.
I'm for madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Balut.
For.
For councillor Chitty.
For.
Councillor Did.
For.
Councillor Hagerty.
For.
Councillor Hall.
Against.
Councillor Caliander.
For madam mayor.
Thank you councillor, deputy mayor councillor Kanib.
For.
Councillor Rhodes is out of the meeting, councillor Sheldon.
Against, thanks madam mayor.
The councillor Rhodes didn't abstain, she, that was, that's it, yes, thank you. All right then, I declare the meeting, the motion carried.
Can I call a division mayor please?
Well, it's on the sheet, so.
Will the names be recorded?
Yes, they will be councillor. We'll make sure they are. Thank you all very much and the meeting is now closed.
Thank you mayor.